We're going to get started with our work session this evening. As a board, we are focusing on our Student Outcomes Focused Governance Framework. This evening, we will be doing our board's self-evaluation with one of our coaches this evening, Ms. Cindy Ellsberg. So, we welcome you back to the place.
Yeah.
To be with us this evening. And I'm not going to talk. I'm going to turn everything over to Cindy so we can get started this evening.
Excellent. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm happy to be back, let me tell you. It's a little strange to be back on this side of the table, but fun to be here and excited to walk you through this process. First of all, you have your Student Outcomes Focused Governance manuals with you. I also gave a worksheet. We're going to go through this process. Before we do, I just want to do a little overview of about self-evaluation. I think this is, is this the first time for new board members to go through the self-evaluation process? Yeah. Yeah, so just kind of a level setting around what self-evaluation is about and why we do it. So, just going to, we're going to do a little co-read. So, on that, on the top of that document, and I'm sorry it's so tiny, if someone will read aloud the first paragraph under what is it?
I'll start. "It is a systematic method of self-monitoring that helps the board stay on track with its commitments to becoming more intensely focused on improving student outcomes. Using the SOFG framework to calculate a baseline score provides a way for the board to understand its current reality, which can be used as actionable data from which to move forward, knowing exactly which items need to be true to score higher in each of the six competencies allows the board to determine what is doable in the next quarter toward continuous improvement in becoming more student outcomes-focused."
Thanks, Joanna. Who will read next paragraph under why is it valuable?
"The board exists to represent the vision and the values of the community in its promise to improve outcomes for students, the sole reason for a school system's existence. Student Outcomes Focused Governance is a framework designed to drive the board's ability to function most effectively to deliver on that promise." This is so small. "It is the process of calibration and recalibration that allows the board to align and realign its behaviors with those most effective in creating the context for improving student outcomes. These behaviors are often not intuitive. Therefore, it can be easy for a board or for board members to fall back into the behaviors that are more intuitive, which more often than not are more appropriate in the realm of project management and work that belongs to the superintendent. The board's assessment of itself using the SOFG instrument in a consistent fashion, quarterly, assists the board in shifting and maintaining its focus on governance versus management."
One more paragraph.
"It is a tool for continuous improvement, not laying blame and pointing fingers. It serves as a reminder for the board to match its doings with its sayings. A board that says it wants to be student outcomes-focused will need to employ behaviors that correlate to improvement in student outcomes. When coupled with an actionable plan for board growth, i.e. an SOFG implementation timeline, it is an empowering mechanism for board effectiveness. As the board continues to improve, the board's growth and accomplishment is cause for celebration."
Right. Thank you. So, just to kind of set that, like I said, set that context for where we're starting, why we're doing it. Tonight, what we're doing is, is kind of a reset. We're going to do a baseline self-evaluation. And that will be a, an exercise for the, in order for the board to determine what its next steps can be and so that we can produce a timeline for further SOFG implementation, re-implementation, what have you, that, that makes sense for the board and, and can be accomplished, not only in, you know, some of these items, even if, even if they are, there might be items that you choose to start accomplishing that might not be done in the next three months, but this, this will be an exercise to get the board thinking about what it, what it is they can do. And this is, Maria is so lucky for being in one of our cohorts and is working on self-evaluation and implementation timeline right now. So, this should be pretty, you get to do a little bit of your homework with all of your colleagues. Yeah. So, welcome, Jackie. We're just, we're just starting with, there was the worksheet. I'm just introducing ourselves to the self-evaluation. The other thing, I just wanted to make sure for everyone, as we go through the six competencies in the framework, vision and goals, values and guardrails, monitoring and accountability, communication and collaboration, unity and trust, and finally, continuous improvement. Just noticing that each of those competencies is scored differently. If you're noticing that, in that final column, mastering student outcomes-focused, there's a number there. Does anybody have, can anybody tell me why that is? Why they think that those competencies are scored differently?
My guess is it probably has to do with level of priority to the overall system. So, vision and goals ideally are weighted the most because it's what's going to yield to the greatest outcome of student, student outcomes-focused governance. And then accountability is second because you have to keep monitoring it regularly. So, based on heaviest weight for heaviest importance.
Yep. Yeah, so those are the, the highest scoring competencies are those most correlated with, the behaviors most correlated with improvement in student outcomes. So, that is, that is the rationale behind that scoring model. I think you all have gone through the process already, but understanding that in order to move from left to right on the rubric, that first, in the not student outcomes-focused column, the board is not student outcomes-focused if any of the following are true. So, if those, if any of those things are true, then you don't move to the scoring in the next column. And then each item in the previous column needs to be true in order to go to the next column. So, just going back through that. And so, I know that all of the board members completed the self-evaluation on their own or with their board buddies and have already produced, have already come up with their scores. What I'm going to have you do, though, is to, I, I think we'll just jump right into grouping with, if we could do four, maybe, I'm thinking we need to mix up a little bit our placement here. So, if we can do, one of, one of you to jump over to this side, and then it's you four and you four. And what, what's going to happen is that you're going to, with your groups of four, in the place on, on that worksheet that I handed out, you have a place to write your baseline evaluation score that you came up with individually. And then also your projected score that you came up with individually. We're going to skip that next column because we were, or if you've already partnered, you can write in what your partner's scores if you had already come to consensus on that. But jump over to the third column. And what you all are going to do is work together to come to consensus on what your scores should be for the vision and values, or excuse me, vision and goals and values and guardrails section. So, instructions on the bottom of that page. What's your current score for those two pages? And you need to be mindful of having evidence to show that you've accomplished each of those items. What items would you prioritize for accomplishment? And note there that it does not have to be linear, and that items chosen for prioritization may take more than one quarter to accomplish, but you can still prioritize things that you might not get done in the next quarter. And then based on your items prioritized, what is your projected score for three months from now? So, there's a place, that's the green section, projected by end of June. This, so the column you're working in is baseline, and then the, for the partners, times two. We're jumping ahead. Amongst your group, and also which items you would prioritize. And you can make note of that on the back or on the notes. There's a notes section in the back of your Student Outcomes Focused Governance manual. Yes, ma'am?
Just a question for scoring purposes. So, say for example, you say we're at a zero, and we project to get, can you give yourself scores in between? Does it have to be all or nothing?
It's all or nothing.
Okay.
And that's, that's the thing. What this is, again, is it's not about good, bad, right, wrong, or otherwise. It is for the board to really assess its current reality in comparison with, with these items and to have actionable data. So, you, you all are evaluating yourselves with, just as you would expect for others in the system, to be reflective and evaluate themselves honestly, and then to be able to make improvements from where you really are at. So, there is no halfway, and that's okay. It's just to know what you need to do next to get to where you want to be and to, and to become more intensely student outcomes-focused. Yep, vision and goals, values and guardrails. So, go ahead and work on those first two, two pages. If you have your individual scores, you can write them, write them in because then you're coming to consensus. You want to reach consensus on what your baseline and projected score is as a group.
All right, are we ready? You guys ready? Okay. Now, we're going to talk a little bit and debrief as a full group and come to consensus as a team of eight. So, I'm -- start on this side of the room. Your consensus projected score, or baseline score, I'm sorry. It's zero. And your consensus projected?
Zero.
Okay. And that was for vision and goals. How about for values and guardrails? Zeros. Okay. And in a minute, we'll come back to what prioritized. How about, how about this group? Baseline for vision and goals?
Zero.
Projected?
Zero.
Values and guardrails?
Zero.
Projected?
Zero.
All right. So, now, let's talk about items to prioritize. What items, what were items from vision and goals that your group would prioritize next? What are the priority topics on that page that you would put forth?
Kelly, can you speak into a microphone? Okay. So, we walked through each of the columns to determine where we still had needs and gaps. And we decided prioritization made sense to go into order of making sure that we move from one column to the next because we're not, we wouldn't start like at the end and say we're mastering and try and accomplish items on the mastering list, knowing that we would never get there until we prioritize what's in front of it. And so, we just walked through each of the columns to identify where our gaps were. So, the first one was identifying and completing the community sessions, which we have not done in the previous 36-month period. Moving into the approaching student outcomes focus column, and that was to make sure our interim goals were smart. Moving into the meeting student outcomes focused is that all interim goals, I'm not going to pull it up because I have little notes, but that all interim goals pertain to student outputs, student or student outcomes, and not inputs and adult outputs. And looking at the last item, which is that goals and interim goals will challenge the organization to require change in adult behaviors. And then, in the blue column, it was everything.
And those are what you're looking at as the next steps toward accomplishment of, or toward continuous improvement in that, in that category.
Correct.
How about this group, just for vision and goals?
We felt strongly that the next step needed to be having listening sessions with the community around the vision and the values. We didn't get much further than that because there's a lot that we have to listen to our community about right now, including the superintendent and other issues that we will be facing, potential school closures and whatnot. So, we felt strongly that, that scheduling those listening sessions, or scheduling a meeting to plan, we didn't feel like we could get the listening sessions done by June. So, really, what's going to get done by June is the planning of the listening sessions. And then, if you were to ask us, where will we be in our next quarter? We felt that that could be accomplished.
So, six months out.
I'm curious about the all or nothing in the columns. Because I think, you know, ultimately, we're at a zero right now, but I, I don't want to discount the fact that we are and have some of the items in place in these columns. And I think it's important to note that we're not really starting from ground zero. And I think that, that we've done a lot as a board from the standpoint of goal setting and monitoring and things like that. I just...
Yeah. And I think that's, I think lifting that up is important that, and I don't want to minimize that, that this board has done a lot around implementation of this, of this framework around, you have done monitoring, there, there are many things in place. And even though your scores right now are zero, that doesn't, that doesn't suggest that there aren't various items that are in place and that you're, you know, moving, moving along with, for sure. And, and that's, I think that's an important thing to note. And there are things, I think, as well, because of where you have been and what you've been doing so far, that there might just be some minor tweaking, minor adjustments, and you'll be right back, you know, into those, those columns. And I think it is the fact that, what I heard both groups talking about as we were, as I was milling around, you were, your conversations weren't entirely different, but recognizing that, I think, being realistic about what you have ahead of you and, and really thinking about the prioritization and, and everything feels very urgent, but being very intentional about how you approach what you have next is super important. So, I definitely appreciate the conversations that you all have been having around that. It seems like there's a couple of things that your group lifted up, like making sure that interim goals are smart. I did notice that on the monitoring report that was pulled, that your interim, interim goals are not, are not smart goals. I would, I might imagine, because that is the, and maybe we can ask Matt, I, I'm not sure how the transition process is going, but don't know if that's a, since that would be, the onus would be on the administrative side as to whether or not that is something that could be accomplished in the next three months, or if that's a further out type of thing. Making sure that your interim goals are smart, meaning they have a, yeah, I think we all know what smart goals are. They have a beginning point, ending point, beginning date, ending date, and then, yeah.
Yeah. I think it, given kind of where we are in the transition right now, I would offer that if we had the summer months, we could get incredibly tight and calibrated around each of the interim goals, as well as the interim guardrails, which we haven't gotten to that point yet, to be smart in smart format. But I'm going to need a little bit more time with the executive cabinet team and the broader cabinet team to make sure that we are all pulling from the same end of that rope. And so, I would ask for just maybe another couple of months beyond the June date to make sure that we hit the ground running in August.
We had discussed, when we got to the values and guardrails piece, that it would, it made sense for us to come back to the table, since the board owns the guardrails and the superintendent owns the interim guardrails. I know that there was collaboration that occurred while we wrote those interim guardrails, but they were just approved not long ago. And I think coming back to the table with you and having another collaboration session around that would be important so that you felt that those interim guardrails aligned and were appropriate for the guardrails that have been set forth.
I would agree with that 1,000 percent. Having the broader team there, the executive cabinet team at a minimum, there to listen to how those got developed, the why behind of those, and have us, you know, that depth and breadth of understanding is going to go a long way in the interim development.
And so, that, that's in the values and, or, yeah, values and guardrail section. So, we'll make sure, that's okay.
Can I ask a quick question of Matt? Because I think this is super important as this work continues. Do you and your staff feel equipped with what you need to accomplish this work? I feel like we've had some fits and starts over time, and I just want to make sure that there is adequate knowledge and/or training so that as the work continues, we don't continue to have sort of this stopping and starting and stopping and starting, because I feel like that has been the biggest deterrent to our ability to implement with fidelity.
And I, the short answer to that is no. I do not feel like we are equipped as an executive cabinet. And I think we, having some intentional time carved out, whether that's weekly or bi-weekly, whether it's right after a board meeting, to reflect on what just took place, how did our actually conversations go? Are we speaking the same language, right? We talked a little bit earlier today about, in this... We talked a little bit earlier today about, in this conversation, around common language, even around inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Just making sure that what we think is an input, you all know is an input because we've talked about that ahead of time, and so that we can discuss it as need be at the board table with authenticity and sincerity, so that it gives our public and our administrators the opportunity to engage in that conversation, whether in the room with us or not, or they're listening to it at home, they know that we're talking about the same inputs, outcomes, and outcomes. Is that helpful? I know it was a long, that was a long-winded answer, but that's kind of how I am, Terry.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just want us to get it right. You know, I've been around this for a while, and I'm tired because I feel like we just have not given the time and attention required. Or, for those that have, it's at a different level and a different frequency than others. And I feel like sometimes the board is ahead of the staff, and sometimes the staff might be ahead of the board, but we're not in the same place. And we've got to get to the same place in order for this to happen the right way.
I would 1,000% agree with that. The opportunity for the executive cabinet team to be coached similarly, the way the board is being coached, would be incredibly helpful.
Well, and here's the good news. And what I didn't mention ahead of time, and I think maybe most of you know this, is that I work with the Council of Great City Schools, and I will be helping AJ support the board and can be on hand to provide support to staff, and especially being right here. So, we can talk more about what that kind of support and training and catching up and whatnot looks like to get you there. Yep. Anything, any other, so what I'm hearing so far is that the listening sessions around vision and values, the planning of those could happen in the next three months, and then further, and then six months out, having them completed. And then, probably several things around the interim goals and maybe a few of these other things, which I can probably pick out, help pick out for you as we build out a timeline, because that's what's going to come of this, is that I'll collaborate with AJ to come up with a timeline for you all to see and check out. But what I can do is pick out a few other things that might come along with that training over the next six months with the staff on their side. Okay, so how about values and guardrails? The items for prioritization. Let's start with this crew first, and Kim already mentioned, well, go ahead and talk about it again.
Yeah, we felt those listening sessions, again, would be the foundation to refocus our work. And then, that collaboration session with Matt and his team around the interim guardrails was going to be the two highest priority. A part of our conversation was, you know, we're currently, as a district, having listening sessions starting next week for one topic. We, as a board, are having conversations around scheduling listening sessions regarding vision and values, as well as the superintendent, as well as, so just something that was discussed and lifted up is what does true community engagement look like? And ensuring that we're thoughtful about ensuring that we have quality engagement and transparency as we enter into the summer months, when parents tend to check out.
Yeah, so you said you do have listening sessions that you're doing soon?
Alison Vukovich and her team are starting listening sessions next week.
Okay, so the staff is starting listening sessions around, okay, around safety. All right. And so, I think what I'm hearing is to ensure that, one, that there's understanding that those are two different things. And then, how will the board engage around what they need to do around owner listening? Because that's also part of it, differentiating between customer, where was that? That's later on. But we talk about customer and owner, owner issues. But the board, the board listening sessions and having a robust process, that would be something that would need to have some intentional planning. There are things that we can assist with as far as what that planning can look like, so that you all, and it's all up to you, though, to come up with that list of comprehensive list of folks that you would engage. We differentiate between engagement and outreach. And so, community engagement is around board hosting listening sessions. Community outreach is around the board going to where people are at, where people already gather. So, together, you would come up with a list, and usually what we recommend is going out two by two with a very, and scripting what that looks like, so it is a consistent message and that you're all on the same page with that and seeking the same type of input. But that's something else that we can also help you with on that front.
And just as I think about it more, the state requires surveying of families and staff, and that's happening right now as well. And I'm guessing that we do end-of-year surveys with families and staff just as a team. So, really being thoughtful about the timing of those and making sure that we're not overlapping or really communicating properly and making efforts to distinguish between the desired outcomes of each of those.
Yeah, I guess I would just also lift up too, taking the time to plan with and coordinate alongside individual schools as they are having community engagement opportunities themselves, and where can we actually attach ourselves sort of at the hip, both as a board and actually as a district, you know, executive team, to make sure that we're asking consistent and coordinated questions while schools are already engaging with families? And where can we actually, you know, see those opportunities ahead of time and then develop any sort of additional community engagement events that maybe we think are not actually capturing the voices that we still need to hear from would be helpful for us moving forward? You know, I think we've talked about, you know, again, having some plans to get out in our community and discuss finance, to discuss curriculum, you know, discuss all these aspects of the organization, to listen to and hear from our families in terms of the impact and their experience they're having, and answer questions, as well as just ask questions of our families. And so, if we do that in a very coordinated way amongst 60 schools, I think we can actually reach a lot of our families, and particularly families that we don't traditionally reach. You know, we fail in our attempts, and this could be actually a much more coordinated event if we take a little bit of time to plan that district-wide.
Yeah, and I think, I appreciate that, and I think still, though, it will need to just be very differentiated in staff is going to engage community around strategy, while board will engage around vision and values, and that, and then also your superintendent selection criteria, however you determine to do that. So, and I think that staff could probably be very supportive in how, in those engagement processes, but also, again, just being clear and careful around differentiation between the, what staff engages community on versus what board engages community on.
So, I don't, I hear what you're saying, Cindy, but the end user, at the end of the day, they don't actually know the difference.
Right, which is why, which is why it's very, there needs to be very intentional scripting and education of the community around what it is that the board is asking of them and what they intend to do with that feedback. And the same on, you know, that, there's, yeah, community doesn't know what hat they're wearing when they come to you, and it's not their job to know that. It's the board's job to help them understand where best they're, if they're coming with a customer issue, with an issue about something happening with their child in their school, then knowing where that best point of customer service is. But then, when they're coming around a vision and value issue, which we would consider more of an owner issue, the board will need to do some, again, some intentional scripting, some intentional probing, and have some very intentional questions in order to get the type of feedback from the community that is really useful for the board.
You lift up something that I think is needed that I don't, I think goes hand-in-hand with this work, and that's the education of our public. Because to Jackie's point, it's, they, not everyone understands student outcomes-focused governance, and what does it mean that I'm only, you know, that we're going to spend 50% of our time monitoring goals and guardrails, and what's a guardrail, and what are you talking about? And so, you're asking me questions around vision and values, but I don't even know what that means. So, is there intentional education that occurs alongside this?
Yeah, there is, and you're probably not going to go out to the community and say, "What's your vision?" You're probably going to say, "What is it that you want your students to know and be able to do?" There are just various questions that we'll probe for that, that are going to be, that the board will be able to distill what the vision and values are based on the answers, the questions, and the questions that are developed can help for you to be able to do that.
I just hope that we continue to look for ways to make it easy on the end user.
Absolutely.
Because it's a lot for families. And so, hopefully, while we're taking the next three months to kind of map out our, to do our planning, at the same time, Matt's team is doing the planning of all the stuff that they want to do in the community, and then we can sync up and look and see if there's overlap. Because while we want some division, I think if we really want to engage families, the best thing we could do is not ask them too many times. So, hopefully, you know, side-by-side planning efforts, and then we look and see where there's some places where we can work together. Because we can explain, we can educate, but at the end of the day, they're customers, and we should make it as easy as possible for them.
Yep, and I don't disagree with that, that you'll want to have that in mind. And I did write down being intentional about the staff, the timing of all of those things.
Can I just add one other thing that I think is really important to this entire process, engagement process, is we can't expect people to continue to engage with us if what they tell us isn't acted on.
And... Ms. Terry, would you repeat what you just said, because I couldn't hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, "We can't expect people to continue to engage with us if what they tell us is not acted on." And so, I think we have to be really careful about not only what we seek in our engagement, but also what we do as a result of having engaged. You know, it's great to get people's feedback and input, but if we're not listening to it, or if we're not utilizing it, or if we're not implementing it in some way, then it's nothing more than empty words on a piece of paper and people having wasted their time coming to engage with us. So, how we sort of create the right space for whatever the engagement is, recognizing that we don't want to overengage, but we have to hit sort of the right cadence in engagement, I think is what Jackie was alluding to.
Yeah.
I also feel like there are going to be times when we have something that we are seeking, but because of timing or something else that's happening in either our environment or the external environment, people are going to want to show up to talk about something other than what we want to put in front of them.
And you're right.
And we have to be ready for that as well.
Exactly. Yep, and that would be part of that process. And definitely, going, it doesn't end with just going and listening once. Part of the process then is to, once you've determined what the board is doing with that listening, whatever it is, then going back out in some way, shape, or form, however the board would decide to do that, whether that be actually going out on another tour or doing some other sort of communication with the public. Again, this is what we heard, this is how we're using it. And at some point, too, that comes with the, you know, if you're upfront with the community that we are listening, we are going to take this information and distill it, we are going to, we are going to, you know, determine whatever it is that we're going to determine, whether it be the selection criteria for the superintendent, or whether it be around your goals and guardrails, that we are listening, we are hearing. There are things, not everything can be prioritized all at once, but this is what we heard, and this is how we're prioritizing these next steps.
Cindy, could I ask a question on that? Because some of that, I wonder, is that, you know, if we don't act on, right? Because I think there's also a disconnect between what the community thinks our role is versus what is management role.
Yeah.
And so, it's definitely very, like, some of that stuff, that's out of our purview of what we can, I mean, depending, I should say, like, I don't know, but could, you know, depending, you know, you hear it all the time, "I've got this issue in my school," or "I've got, you know, this problem over here." And those aren't our issues, they're the district's issues, but they fall in line with the superintendent response, and the team's response, right? So, it's not like we're going into schools and fixing the problems.
Right, yeah, you're not going into schools and fixing problems, no. And people are going to bring those issues, they're always going to bring those issues to the board. And it's, again, it's not the community's job to know what hat they're wearing or what the job of the board or the role of the board is. It's the board's job to educate the community about what the role of the board is and where their, you know, I think we just talked about this a couple of days ago, if folks come to you with those kind of issues, they need to be heard, and they need to feel heard, but it's not, and maybe you all can remember, maybe Maria, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but when we solve, when we, it's best to put them in touch with the place that their issue can be dealt with. But if the board were to deal with an issue brought, do either of you remember, we just talked about it a couple of days ago in the cohort, what happens when the board takes care of issues?
It's chaotic.
Well, it's chaotic, but it also... Well, it's chaotic, but it, it also breeds inequity within the system. It means that people who have access to board members can get their problems taken care of. Um, but there is, but they still need to be, be listened to. They need to be pointed in the right direction and they need to, and the board can engage in dialogue to, you know, if, here's where you go. And, and it depends on the context. If it's at a board meeting, you're probably going to direct it to the superintendent. If it's a, an issue that is not in board purview. If it's at the grocery store, you're going to hear them. And if it's at a school issue, you're probably going to direct them to the super, or to the principal, but invite them to, if you didn't get your issue resolved, feel free to come back to me and I will point you up the chain of command. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah. So, I mean, what I remember is, and I have to admit that it's difficult to do that.
Yeah.
Um, because it seems cold.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it seems disrespectful. And, you know, when I think of, uh, dealing, for example, with, um, someone from my community and I say, "Well, you know, here's this person, this is who you're supposed to talk to," um, that's hard to do.
Yeah.
Particularly when, you know, we're, we're in the business of also looking at the whole student. We have to look at the whole person. We have to look at the whole community. And that's hard to do. What I remember from the conversation, um, this week in training, it's important to validate, uh, the person's concerns. Um, it's important to listen, um, to provide, um, some direction, right? So connect them to, um, the appropriate, uh, person to help them and invite them. Uh, if for some reason things were not, if that person didn't get a response, um, then invite them back to converse. Um, but it's hard.
Yeah.
It's hard.
And you remembered very well because that's, yeah, those were, those, that's absolutely, because it is important to listen. Um, and it is hard. And I think, I think you all know that sitting in the seats that you do isn't easy work. Um, but that's, that is where that, you know, the, while it's hard and it, it might feel uncomfortable, um, pointing people into the, to the direction where it, where their issues can best be taken care of, um, is going to be, in the end, better for that. And it's also going to provide that system feedback. Um, if the system doesn't know what's not working, then how are they going to fix it?
Yeah. So I have a question for you.
Sure.
Okay. So where's accountability come into it? If like our, just, this is kind of like where I'm trying to understand the whole process.
Sure.
So if there continue to be unsatisfactory responses to our community, um, but that's not what we're focused on in our vision and values and our guardrails work, right? Because, so how, where's the accountability for that unsatisfactory response or not, our, 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 our family's not feeling validated or heard or like their concerns not being heard? I guess maybe I'll take safety, right? Safety's not, I mean, it's coming in, but it's not really something we should be monitoring if we were hypothetically and like our, I mean, how do you deal with these things that are really important to people and they're feeling like they're not being heard by your administration that you keep sending them back to, but it's not really our job to monitor it? Do, does that make sense? Like I'm trying to figure out the accountabilities of it all.
So the accountability for when a family comes, comes to the board with issues such as safety and then they're-
Right. That are like outside of our purview of-
Mm-hmm.
-our goals and guardrails.
So-
And we keep sending them back, but they're not feeling like they're receiving satisfactory response from administration. So then when, where does the buck stop, I guess?
Yeah. And I guess, um, and perhaps I need to understand more what an unsatisfactory response is. Um, because there are going to be, being heard doesn't always necessarily translate to getting what you want. Um, so there is a validation around being heard and understanding that, but, um, and, and validating the concerns, but not, as Terry mentioned, it doesn't always translate to community members getting what they want. And that's, that's sort of why we talk about vision and values. Um, when we talk about values, it's, it is not about necessarily, um, every strategy or every program or every, every want and whim of the community, uh, being honored and, and written into a guardrail or what have you. But it's, um, it's about getting to those underlying values. So AJ often uses the, the idea of, of, um, his neighborhood wanting a stop sign, uh, and stop, having a stop sign as a strategy. And when he, uh, interrogated that, what they really, you know, "Why do you want a stop sign?" Well, because the kids, the kids are, cars are driving by fast and, and, um, kids are out there playing. Okay. Uh, when he kept interrogating with the whys, he really got to that underlying value, which was safety. And what ended up, the strategy that ended up working out better was a speed bump versus a stop sign. So, um, I guess what, so getting at the value versus the strategy is, is what the board needs to do. As far as, um, when folks feel like they're not heard, that's, I think that's the same advice that, that you would give to your, give to staff is to have them exactly what Maria, what Maria articulated around validating their concern, but also understanding that not everything that they want, the community wants is actually going to come to fruition. So when you're talking about accountability though, that's going to be in the monitoring of the goals and guardrails that the board has prioritized.
Yeah. I mean, I think just to put a little bit more color on this, and, and I feel like this could be an, an hours-long conversation.
Forever.
And so we may want to park this one. But, you know, when you look at our schools, our children are in crisis. The state of education seems to be in crisis right now with the loss of teachers. You've got mental health challenges. You know, it's just, it's a lot. And, and, and COVID has obviously changed a lot. I think the struggle is this, the school system isn't meeting the needs of a lot of kids right now. And so it's not about individual students and particular programs. It's deeper than that. And so I think the, the, the point or the thing that Jenna's struggling with, that I'm struggling with, that I'm sure other people are struggling with is, and we saw it with our monitoring reports, we're not achieving, something's not working. And so you have a lot of parents, a lot of guardians, a lot of people feeling that way and wondering, where does the buck stop? And I think that's, that's a struggle point. Um, and what is the role of a school board when things aren't working? And there's so many reasons why things aren't working. This is not about finger pointing, but, but I think it's important to just acknowledge that this is not individual parents with individual student programmatic needs. This is much deeper right now.
Yeah.
That a lot of students aren't, um, meeting goals.
Yep. And, and I, I completely understand that. And I think the other thing that's been, um, pointed out though, pointed out as well, and this is why we do self-evaluation, because we talk about accountability. Um, and, and that's why the board takes this step to hold it, this first step in holding itself accountable and to implementing, uh, governance structure with validity. Um, and, and Terry brought it forward as well, that the fits and starts and not, not feeling like this, feeling like staff maybe is, like there's gaps in their ability to bring forward the information that the board needs to actually do the monitoring that it needs to do to ensure that the implementation of the goals and guardrails is being done, uh, in a way that actually moves the needle. And so I think, I think those are some of the things that I know it's not, I, I know it, it is a crisis moment right now and it feels, it feels that way. It feels like, like, um, it definitely feels like that, but it's the intentionality. I know we need to move slow to move fast is the best I can say it.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
So, so again, I already said, it, it's difficult.
Yeah.
Right? And, and I know that as a board, we're moving in this direction, but it's still difficult. And, and so I am, so I'm putting myself in, um, in my own shoes prior to being a board member.
Mm-hmm.
As a parent.
Mm-hmm.
Just a parent. And someone who, you know, has worked in the community for, for a long time. So for 25 years. In my experience, communities of color don't complain. And so it's like, you know, things have to get really bad. You have to be really ill and then you go to the emergency room. And it's been my experience that, you know, when families finally speak up or show up to advocate for their child or to attempt to receive support for their child, their experience hasn't been the best. And so when you go to the emergency room and you're sent back, you know, because maybe your, your issue is minimized or, for whatever reason, then that parent, that parent many times won't come back because they already tried. And so what I'm, what I'm feeling and what I'm thinking is, what I'm thinking is, so as a board member, someone comes and I refer and I connect them because that's what I'm supposed to do according to this framework, which in theory, it should work.
Mm-hmm.
But reality for families is very different. And particularly for families of color who stepped out of their comfort zone to show up and ask me, and I refer, and they go because, you know, Maria told them, "Go to this person and they'll help you." And then there's that follow through, right? On that end, that perhaps doesn't happen, which then stops families from attempting again because we already tried that, you know, because they didn't understand us or because there was no one available or because we showed up and that person wasn't there. And so it's hard for me because I'm seeing the framework as a way of continuing to keep people quiet and discouraged from what we as a district want families to do, which is come and speak, show up. And we're, we're trying to be inclusive and the framework seems to quiet people down.
Okay. And, uh, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, I think there's probably a, a few things that I would wonder about.
Yeah.
And that would be, um, and this might be, this might be something that we need to delve in deeper later and maybe not as part of this conversation. And it might be part of board operating procedures and, um, about how those referrals are made, how the follow-up is done. Um, the framework is not meant to quiet anybody. Um, and the framework doesn't, there are actually, uh, outside of this framework, chain of command and referring to a chain of command within the school system, board role, management role. That's not just a, that's not just an SOFG framework, um, type, uh, type thing. That, you know, IASB will tell you to do that. There, there are all sorts of, um, governance management operating procedures that would tell you that. So, um, that's what I wonder is if, if, if there is a way with, within what the board's role is to ensure that, um, that there is a follow-up, that there kicks, kicks back some sort of, of follow-up. And maybe it's a, it's the method by which you do make those referrals, you know? Is it, and I don't know what that is right now.
Right.
But that's probably something that could be talked about further later so that, so that there is some, some method to understand that a family has been followed up with, um, whether that, and that's, I think we can talk more about that.
And I, and I think that maybe, I don't know if that's what you mean by accountability, um, Jenna, or at least that's the way, I mean, Ms. Knox. Um, that, that's the way I perceive it. And I, I know, again, I know that as a board, we're moving in this direction. I guess I, I, I want us to be able to talk about all perspectives.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and really how, again, you know, in theory, I can see this, you know, truly working, um, and being effective, um, in theory. But what concerns me is, you know, the practice. And I hope that we're, you know, we have to be intentional, right?
Mm-hmm.
In, in, in the implementation of, of this. And that means there has to be some accountability. And my only concern is that we're hope, hopefully not hindering presence, you know, from community, um, when we're trying to do the opposite as, as a district.
Okay. And I, and-
Thank you.
And thank you. And thank you for, um, hashing that out between, so that I had a better understanding. But I do think that there's, that there are probably things that, that can be talked about to, to address how that works. Um, and I can't think of what the current board operating procedure is around, around that. Um, my memory is not as, uh, it's been a couple of years, but I, I believe there is something about, about, about that in current board policy, but I think that's something to, to, uh, and I may note that, something to look at. Okay. I think we need to keep, keep moving along. So I have notes on, uh, vision and goals, values and guardrails. Um, and we are at, just time check, it's 7:40. I think we need to move along to the next couple of pages. Monitoring and accountability and communication and collaboration. And if, if you can work with your groups again, same process, let's try to get it done in 10 minutes. same process, let's try to get it done in 10 minutes.
We would echo what our colleagues across the room talked about with, which is the, I'm sorry, I'm chewing on ice.
Oh.
I didn't want you to hear me chewing ice.
We would echo what our colleagues on the other side of the room lifted up in our last conversation, but really those community sessions as being a priority.
Okay.
For monitoring and accountability?
Yeah.
Sorry, not monitor. I was looking ahead. Sorry. Monitoring and accountability, what we talked about was really looking at distinguishing between customer versus owner. The customer versus owner for the board to be able to be fluent and distinguish between those two issues. We also talked about monitoring calendar, which would probably not be done until we have completed more work on interims and getting them in a smart format. So there's still some work to do around that. And then lifted up, we just had a conversation a little bit about our time use and evaluating ourselves on how we are spending our time.
Okay. How about?
We felt the largest priority was adopting a monitoring calendar.
And, and that would probably along with the interim work.
Right.
Then, which is looking six months out. Okay. Excellent. And then communication and collaboration priorities, we'll start on, in the, on this side of the room this time.
We felt that having Rosie start to do time use evaluations would help us really look in the mirror at how much time we're spending in meetings. And then just improving our communication as a team because much of our board work sessions that have occurred, had we, had we been better about identifying, you know, the outcome of a work session and holding the staff accountable to that outcome, holding ourselves accountable to that outcome, perhaps we wouldn't have been spending so much time in work sessions. So just improving communication.
Okay. How about this side of the room?
That was what I spoke of earlier.
Oh, the listening, the conversations. And how about what you just heard? So I, I think you all talked about time use evaluation starting. And I think that, actually, I think coming up, Rosie will be doing some pretty significant training around that because she also is in a council cohort. So you'll have someone ready to do that. And then how about the improving communication as a team thought? Yeah. So what, what item, what item are you categorizing that under? Or is that just, is that a?
Well, we recognize that the need for work sessions is not going to decrease based on just the work that we have ahead of us from the standpoint of scheduling and having listening sessions. And that's all board authorized time. And I, I foresee new committees being created around the superintendent search and that's all board authorized time. So just being really thoughtful about the time that we are spending together and ensuring that we have identified outcomes and those outcomes are communicated to all stakeholders. So we know how to be prepared. We know what's expected of ourselves and our colleagues. And we're accomplishing exactly what we've said we would accomplish. So is there an item in this list where that?
I would, I would say that that probably falls more under unity and trust in the board operating, in board operating procedures. But we can tag it for that. But we can tag it for that.
Because I, with the idea that if there are, if there's a way that the board wants to operate around its work sessions, then put that in your operating procedures, so it's communicated and everyone has that expectation. You've written down that expectation, and therefore you are, you have something later to self-evaluate, because, well, we'll get to that. Is there anything else as far as prioritization that wasn't lifted up that anybody thinks should be on the list? Okay, and then?
Hey Cindy?
Yeah.
We did talk about one thing, and I think this is about, I don't know, it probably is in both unity and trust, but also continuous improvement, but it's really around making sure that we are respectful of each other's time. And Kim raised this about if we're not ready for a discussion, or if information hasn't been communicated enough in advance that we have time to prepare, then maybe taking time to have the discussion isn't the right time, because we're getting it cold and we don't have the benefit of having prepared for the kind and type of discussion that a particular subject may require. So I think this is as much around the board making sure that it does its homework, but at the same time ensuring that the staff gives us enough lead time so that we can be fully and completely prepared and conversant on an issue, so that we are making the best use of everyone's time. So don't just wait and give us something at the last minute and expect that we're going to be prepared to have the kind of conversation that we need to.
And I would say that goes both ways, too.
Correct.
So if we're providing feedback in an inappropriate timeframe, being able to have that safe space to say, like, neither side is ready to have the conversation, and we need to be thoughtful, but that's again in here.
Right, yeah, I think, I think you actually already do have policy around that, but I think as, as you go through, because the board does already have operating procedures, and it's what's labeled as governance process in your current board governance manual, and it sounds like there are tweaks coming, coming to that that you're all going to discuss as a whole, that's where that, that stuff would live. There is also process around when materials are received, when things should, or at least opportunity for that as far as expectations from the superintendent around when an agenda is released and when all of the supporting material should be released to the board, and then an expectation around what that allows then for the board as far as, I mean, putting their questions forward, all of that, so I think that's, that's where some of that can live. And that, that, you haven't done it yet, and it's, it's coming up as well, but the, the board also has opportunity to write its own guardrails around its own, own operations, and that might be where that, that can happen. Okay, so let's, let's do those last two pages, and let's try to get that done in, in 10 minutes, too, and wrap this up. Let's try to wrap it up in about three minutes. Okay, let's, let's finish this up. Yep, yep, let's, let's get together again, all right. I'm not gonna call you out.
You, you would like our numbers?
Yes, I would like your number.
So we are going to say for unity and trust, current, we're at a one, three months, we'll be at a one. Continuous improvement, current, zero, three months, zero. So if you're adding it up, a total of one current and one future.
Okay, so unity and trust, you're at a one and?
And three months will be at a one.
At a one, and zero and zero for the others.
Yep, one, one, zero, zero.
How about this, your group?
Our current state for both is zero. And I think we're, we're future state zero on both as well, is that accurate? Yeah.
Okay, so let's, why did, so on unity and trust, why did, what, what accounts for the difference there? Why did you have it at a zero?
Yeah, in our last meeting, Teri voted against a conflict of interest.
Sorry, we talked about that too, Teri, and the one unknown is, is that by law, or is it by board policy? So the statement does say that it is a conflict as defined by law.
It does.
Oh, okay. So are? I think that we are probably still at a zero, because I don't think we're meeting everything in that column one.
So which would mean 80% attendance during the previous three month period. Does the board, is the board at that?
Yes.
The board has adopted a policy or procedure requiring that information provided by the superintendent to one board member is provided to all board members?
That is being met.
Yep, the board reviews all policies governing board operating procedures at least once during every length of time equal to the board member term of office?
Yes. We just reviewed it in December, we've not, we need to present and vote on a new one, but.
Okay, the board has adopted an ethics and conflicts of interest statement, and all board members have signed the statement during their current term of office. Everybody signed conflict of interest?
We have a conflict of interest statement, I don't think that we have an ethics statement.
So, so we think that, that that's, that they are not one in the same?
And that's where we kind of got hung up, too, because same thing, but then I know when we looked at the green column, and it talks about items specific in that statement, those are things we don't have, but we thought, gosh, we could certainly amend our current statement to reflect that language in three months. But yeah, we didn't think we could ever put ourselves in a three, because we have a statement, but it may not have all components in it.
Do you guys agree? I'm in a state of agreement right now.
That you're at a one, and that that, that is there? I would con-
My hunger is driving that choice.
Yeah.
No, I'm kidding. No, I also agree with it. I think, I, I concur.
So unity and trust, we are at a one.
Current state, one, future state?
Future state, one.
Did you say one?
We put our future state at one, and based mainly, if you look at the green column, the last point, that the board- the last point, that the board, it's wonky, but that the board has agreed during the most recent quarterly self-eval, that the board has honored the three aforementioned ethical boundaries, which in my head, I'm like, well, we have to do this statement. Then we have to have, you know, kind of an initial-
Information only, a read, first read, and then an approval.
First read. Get that approved. And with, then we have to also give ourselves that three months, like, it's going to take this, this quarter to get that done. And then we have to evaluate ourselves on it probably next quarter.
I agree.
So that's why I felt we would not get to.
Current state, one. Future state, one.
Okay. And then everyone was zero, 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 zero on the continuous improvement. Okay, how about items for prioritization? On, let's start with unity and trust. Oh, wait.
We, we felt that the, that presentation of the new policy manual is highest priority.
And the policy manual, which includes all of those sections of policy, including?
Correct.
Board operating procedures and board management.
Correct.
Anything different? Yeah, you got another one? Okay. You have something else?
I was moving to continuous improvement.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I, that, we would agree with that. And then the one thing we thought we could immediately conquer might be just the re, or the amended, amendment of the conflict of interest statement to reflect the language as identified in the eval.
Is that something that you all would want to prioritize in the next three months, looking at the conflict of interest statement and potentially adding language to it?
Can you say that again?
To amend the current conflict of interest statement, and based on the green column, those three bullets that are mentioned.
I think we've already accounted for that in the current draft.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
So I think we're already.
So I think it's already been prioritized.
Yeah.
So we'll write that down as the, revising the conflict of interest statement. Okay. Wonderful. All right, continuous improvement.
A coaching session to occur with Matt and the staff that he deems appropriate to be involved regarding specifically monitoring and monitoring reports.
Anything else you're prioritizing?
I think we also prioritized a joint, a joint session at some point after so that we could all have clarity around what moving forward looks like and identifying those things that either we are good with or things that we still need to work on collectively.
So once, once Matt and team have done their work?
Correct.
Anything, would you concur with that?
We would concur, as we did not get to that discussion and ran out of time. But they were, we're going to copy their homework.
Okay, you can copy their homework. That works. All right. Okay, so thank you all for doing this. I know, you know, one thing, I, you have to have an exit ticket. What is the value of continuous improvement? And what connections can you make between self-evaluation and the board's, and the board's continuous improvement to both your transition to having an interim superintendent and then to a superintendent search? That's your exit ticket. Anybody? What connection can you make between self-evaluation and the board's continuous improvement to both your transition to having an interim superintendent and to a superintendent search?
The way a good coach plays back the tape after a game, we as school board members need to do the same. We need to reflect on all that is good, all of our areas of opportunity. We need to celebrate when we have an achievement. We need to hold each other accountable and really just be honest with each other and look in the mirror. And it will make all of us better. And those all should have been I statements, not us and we statements, so I apologize.
And I, I should have been calling you out on that.
I think modeling, just to play off of Kim, modeling vulnerability is okay because it's also communicating to the staff the same thing, that sometimes you nail it, sometimes you don't, and you just reflect on it, move on. And for an interim superintendent, that's the message that we want them to see as well, just continuous improvement.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you, if you don't have it, that's okay. So one thing I, I do know that AJ shared, has superintendent search process document with you, and I'm going to lift up one, one thing out of there as far as a connection, and that's around attraction. How do we attract highly effective staff? And under that description, it says, "The more disciplined the school board is in distinguishing between governance and management, and the more effective the school board is at governing, the more attractive it makes the district to potential staff. Key activities include clearly articulating the vision and values of the community in the form of goals and guardrails, identifying optimal governing practices, and rigorously holding themselves accountable for their implementation, and clearly articulating how the superintendent will be evaluated, ideally in a manner that is in alignment with the community's vision and values." So, so I really appreciate that you all are taking that step toward that self-accountability that makes it okay for everyone else to, to realize that, that it is okay to be vulnerable. And also that you're on a continuous improvement path toward strengthening your governance practices, distinguishing between governance and management, and then, and then really pivoting to that monitoring for accountability. So thank you for having me here tonight to lead you through this process. I will be putting into writing what I heard tonight and your consensus scores so that you can have it on a future agenda for approval, and check that off your list of approving board evaluation results. Any questions before we leave? I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.